Continue with your help, so that all our meetings and works may begin with you, and by you be happily ended. Come to us, remain with us, and enlighten our hearts. Give us light and strength to know your will and to make it ours. Guide us by your wisdom, support us by your power, for your God. You desire justice for all. Enable us to uphold the rights of others. Do not allow us to be misled by ignorance or corrupted by fear or favor. Unite us to yourself in the bond of love, and keep us faithful to all that is true. As we gather in your name, may we temper justice with love, so that all our decisions may be pleasing to you, and earn the reward promised to the good and faithful servants. In God's holy name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Father. To the flag of the United States of America and to the flag of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's start this morning with the order approving request of AMR ambulance service to add basic life support emergency ambulances to the 911 system until December 31st, 2023, which is the end of the current contract. Motion?
Motion.
Second discussion. Pat, can you tell them what that is?
Yes, let me refer to AMR. They're the ones just bringing this forward to you, and they're proposing to you. So if you don't mind, let me let them make that explanation to you.
Thank you, Pat. Governor Julia Clark, she's our government relations director. Steve Delahoussier. Just a little history here. In emergency medical services, there are two levels of service. Advanced life support, which takes care of life-threatening emergencies, and basic life support, which has EMTs on the ambulance. Years ago, Harrison County enacted an all ALS system. That was my decision when I was running the ambulance service. We had enough paramedics to wear every call, even though it wasn't a life-threatening emergency, we could have paramedics. That's not the case now. We have a shortage of paramedics, as there is nationwide. Also, a lot of people think that just because a call comes in on 911, it's an emergency. That is not the case. In Harrison County, probably only 20% of the 911 calls are legitimate emergencies. People use abuse the 911 system. We have our dispatchers that are qualified to triage the calls and determine if it's an ALS call or a BLS call. This order allows BLS ambulances to respond to non-emergency calls. Give you an example. Recently, we had an ALS ambulance tied up for four hours taking a patient to the dentist office. That's an ALS ambulance that could have been treating life-threatening emergencies. BLS ambulances would be used for that. This order in no way supplants ALS ambulances. It is not intended to have ALS ambulances respond to BLS emergencies. We still will have ALS ambulances respond to life-threatening emergencies. If a call comes in, it's unknown, we're going, emergency, we're going to send ALS to it. But this allows those BLS ambulances to take those non-emergency calls and keep the ALS ambulance reserved for what they really need. This is a tiered system. It's used around the country. We use it elsewhere here on the coast. It works, it works just fine. Chief component, you have to have dispatchers that are screening those calls to make sure the right ambulance gets to the right patients. One thing that we would ask is that, we have a plan to implement this. Like I said, we've done this all over the country. We would like to, on the implementation of this, we would like to talk to the fire department focus group that we created on August the 7th. And if you remember, at that time, the cities had some concerns that they were not included. We don't want this to appear as one of those situations. We would like to include that fire department focus group on the implementation of this strategy. That was not their mission that y'all assigned them to do, but we think that's a good idea. We would like to do that.
Steve, if I may, one question.
Yes.
Why this late? Why, it's been obvious that this could be used for a year or so, why now?
Correct. We have, obviously, you know, there are issues about response times. This will help improve immediately. There are things that we can do immediately to help with our response times. One of the things is to put, we don't have an abundance of ALS ambulances to put in the system, but we'll send BLS ambulances. We do have a cadre of BLS ambulances.
But I'm asking you, why, why is requests now? Why wasn't it done earlier?
Julia?
Julia. It was, it was discussed at one time, and at the time, it was just decided that it wasn't a good thing for the county at that time, with the people that we had discussed it with, and so we just kind of left it on the, on the table. Well, this started about, this actually started during COVID. Mississippi Ambulance Alliance went to Jim Craig, who was over at the Department of Health at the time, and the state officer, Dr. Dobbs, we worked with him, because this was happening in other states. It wasn't something we had in Mississippi. And so we went and talked to him to say, this is something we need. We've got more basics. You don't put your, you use your seasoned basics, let's just say, that your seasoned basics are going out on the emergency calls. So they put it in place during COVID, and it worked so well, we went back to the state and said, would you make this a permanent thing for us? So they did. They went in and made a rule, and they put it in the rules and regs for EMS. And so after your vote today, say you to vote yes today, then we have to get with our medical director that writes a letter, and then the protocols that we work with the fire chief zone and come up with, those go in with the letter to the state. And so the state approves this tiered system. Even after your vote, we have to send it up there, and then they'll write back and say, yes, we agree with your protocol, you have the correct dispatchers, and that sort of thing. And then after this, we still have to send data to the state.
Let me ask you another question. How does that affect the cost? The difference in the cost if you were to have to send an ambulance that required ambulatory, I mean, somebody really serious? And you send this one just for whatever reason, that's not, I assume it's not a serious issue that you can deal with. What about your costs now? Are those costs reimbursed by Medicaid or whatever?
Yes, significantly less cost to the patient, less to CMS, which is Medicare and Medicaid. An ALS call costs a whole lot more than a BLS call does. So, and all charges, of course, and we can't charge ALS if we send a BLS ambulance. So, and another primary reason, Dr. Ladner, is for doing this now. In the past, we did not have as big a shortage and as big a problem as recruiting paramedics. And this is an issue nationwide. Nurses, there's an issue recruiting nurses nationwide. They go do other things that they can make more money. We're trying to do everything we can to entice more people, giving them higher salaries, incentives to do this. We're trying, and I think eventually it will work, but we, we think we need to do something now. The cities, I think we, think we need to do something now.
See, what you're saying, what you're saying too, as well, is the dispatch person is going to have to make some determination.
Yes, sir.
So there's going to be some questions. What impact does that have on our distribution as far as the 911 call?
We already have this system in place. They're doing that now.
They're doing it now?
Yes, sir. Oh, yes. We have qualified dispatch. We're the only all E and D certified dispatch center in South Mississippi. So we're doing that now. A call goes in to say the sheriff's department, primary PSAT.
So they're asking those questions?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, they are. And if it's an unknown emergency, somebody says, hey, there's been a wreck, we don't know if there's anybody hurt, we're sending ALS. We're not going to take the chance. Okay.
All right. Any further discussion? With motion in a second, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question? Are y'all going to renew your contract to provide that?
Yes. Yeah, 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 yeah. We'll have to work.
Our recognizing Mrs. Marion Clayton with concerns regarding cemetery located on Ed Byrd's property off Landon Road, that's north of Huddle Road.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you so much for having me. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak with you this morning about Landon Cemetery located two miles west of Santa Fe on Landon Road. The cemetery was established approximately 1916, we believe, actually, that it was established before that time. But the last burial that we've been able to verify was in 1967. Around that time, the cemetery or the land surrounding the cemetery was purchased by the Watts family. And that was around the same time that the community was no longer able to maintain and take care of the cemetery. So it fell into disrepair, and we would like to begin protecting it. One of the things that the current property owner mentioned recently was that he's considering selling it. In fact, he mentioned having a buyer at one time, and that kind of concerned the community. Because their question was, what's going to happen to the cemetery? We haven't seen it in a long time, and we'd just rather it to be saved and protected. So that, of course, brought me here to talk with you all. The cemetery has approximately 100 burials. We verified 49. So as a large cemetery, you have to remember that this cemetery was in existence in 1916, and the people there in the side camp community worked in the lumber industry. They worked in turpentine, things like that. So they worked there and unfortunately died there and used the cemetery to bury in. So one of the things that I would like to request from you all today is to help us save it and protect it by issuing a resolution, if you can, because there is no mention of the cemetery in any deed. So it's a moment to purchase the property. If our property owner doesn't mention that the cemetery is there, then there could be a problem. So if you could issue a resolution of some sort, or a proclamation, or something that can be added to documentation at the Chancery clerk's office to state the cemetery is there, that would be fantastic. Going forward, the property owner is here today. If he and I are able to come to a resolution of some sort, and he allows us to begin cleaning the cemetery, we would, of course, want to come back to you and ask for your assistance and provide a pathway so that we would be able to clean the cemetery and maintain it. I've got a group of volunteers who are ready to go, and they are ready to help us with maintenance. So that is what I'm asking for today. First, that you issue some type of a proclamation or resolution of some sort, so that there is evidence of the cemetery on record here at Harrison County. Because again, for all intents purposes, the cemetery doesn't exist where as we know it does. So I would like for you to correct history in that manner, so that there is evidence of the cemetery existing. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Byrd?
Mr. Byrd, you're here.
Yes, ma'am, I'm here. My name's Ed Byrd, I live on 18316 Landon Road, Gufford, Mississippi. Our family's had that property since 1942. My great-great-grandfather was there, was diamond, which I'm sure Troy remembers the diamonds. And also Burkitts. Burkitts were there for the railroad. He repaired axles and wheels for the railroad company. Diamond had Diamond, Diamond T Railroad, and also owned the sawmills from McHenry all the way down to Gufford, right here where Hancock Bank is in Gufford. He used to own that property right there. He paid 22 cents a lot for it back in those days. They saw square logs up there, and they took it down here and put it on the clipper ships, and it went back around to the east coast. Side camp was started because of that, because they needed the people. Most of them came from out of state that they brought in here at that time to build side camp, to help them with the railroad and the lumber yards. Don't know about the turpentine.
Okay, very, that's very interesting. You're allowing volunteers on your land to clean this and keep it?
No, ma'am, we're not letting them come on there until they, my insurance company says no, that they have to have, before they can come on that property, they've got to have liability insurance. The county doesn't need to put up the money to cut right away through there to get to it, because I've already talked about that, and that the, the property that's there was maintained by us since 1969, 70. Nobody came to help us put that thing together. Me and my father-in-law worked on that place and cut it after Camille came through. We cut all those trees down, moved all that stuff, and put a fence up. The fence is 100, about 120 feet by 120 feet by 125, 120 feet square. There's no way that that many people can be buried there in that cemetery. So I'm, I'm saying that if they're going to do this, I'm giving them an option. Want to buy the property? I'd be glad to sell the property. There's 53 acres there, 1.2, 1.7 million. If they want it, there it is.
Here it says property owner reported property is being sold to Memorial Hospital this year?
It was last year.
It was last year?
It was last year.
23 years. So the deal fell through?
They couldn't, they didn't have the money either when they, we had to close out.
You said that Memorial Hospital was the?
They was going to buy it last year, but that fell.
They wanted to buy that 53 acres in that area there to build a hospital, so they, they asked us if we would be willing to sell it.
Well, it's Whitman. I'll be, I'll be.
Well, also, it belongs, part of that property belongs to Mississippi State, because we gave that to them.
Mississippi State owns part of it?
Yes, ma'am.
Just for clarification purposes, I checked with Kent, he called it Memorial Hospital, and they said they never had an option or discussed.
We had a discussion there on my place with Memorial Hospital about bringing a center there to that, that location.
There was never any contract?
No, ma'am.
So it was just a discussion?
That's right. It was just an agreement that we're sitting around and talking about.
So first of all, I think the historical society needs to be contacted.
And have been.
And what did they say?
And they're on board.
So they can document that it is there?
Yes, ma'am. They've got that information, so has Mississippi State Department Archives History.
Good.
They've been out, and they were ready to designate it, but unfortunately, the property owner would not authorize designation. I also understand that the Veterans Association has made a phone call and asked about the veterans that have been buried there, and the property owner had been informed to me that he would not verify that, that the veterans should know exactly where they buried their people.
That's correct. They, they have a list of where they buried their people, their, from the veterans.
I would, Tim, legal, Clayton requesting some sort of resolution or something from the board to indicate, either through Chancery office or whatever, that there is a cemetery there. What, what kind of legal issue we involve him, because he's a private property owner, and I think there's some legal issues we have here, and I'd have to defer to you.
Wouldn't do anything to put people on notice that there was a cemetery there.
We couldn't do that.
Shouldn't be on, be on notice anyway, because there's tombstones.
Right.
And sir, if I can mention that we have to remember that this is a very poor settlement, like Mr. Byrd mentioned. These people came in, they were migrants that came in to work, so they didn't have the money to put up headstones. So what they used, my great-great-grandmother used broken plates, broken bottles and things like that to indicate graves, and she did that throughout her lifetime. So if you dig deep enough, there are bottles there to indicate each grave. I spend a lot of time at archives and history, and I've researched 49 death certificates that indicate that these people are there, as well as obituaries that indicate that others that are, are buried there. There are, and funeral homes, I've been to the funeral homes. So they've got verification, they've put the people there. So there are at least 100 people on my list.
There's, there's, there's no way.
So the fence may not have included everyone, but they're there.
The thing about it is, if you're not allowing them to get out there to verify, I came to, let's, let's back up a little bit. 2016, 2016.
I'm understanding that because you saying there's no way it could be that amount of people out there, and saying that it is, but if no one, we can't get out there to verify that, that's.
You know why? In 2016, Channel 13 came out there and filmed all that. It was there. Guess who I had to run off the property out there for people coming out there on that property trying to, to search the graveyard? A bunch. And I asked not to put it back on TV. It showed back up on TV again. So I went out there to my roadway, talked to my insurance company, and I talked to my lawyer. He says block it off. Put a gate up, fence it off, don't let anybody back in there. So that's what I done because of the people trying to steal from, from the graveyard.
Steal from the graveyard? And this came?
When, when I contacted Mr. Byrd recently to ask for the approval to go back out to the cemetery, and he told me that the, the land was for sale and that Memorial Hospital put their earnest money down, I asked him then, if there was anything I could do. He said, well, they put their earnest money down, and they've got to come back through with a contract. If they don't make the contract, then I keep money. I said, well, Mr. Byrd, I'm going to do my level best to make sure that you get to keep that money. Now, when you get to keep the money, I expect you to give me the cemetery. I'm hoping that you will give me the cemetery. I hope that you record it.
She always said she can buy.
Wait, please, one at a time.
I asked that he give me the cemetery, and I repeated that several times. I said, now, Mr. Byrd, don't be surprised if you see me on the news again, because I'm going to do my level best to make sure that Memorial Hospital does not buy this property. He said, okay.
No.
I got off of the phone, and I went out to a force. So, yeah, I was back on the news.
So Memorial didn't, never did a contract?
No, of course.
Earnest money, so.
No.
All right, so the board can, it sounds like we can do a resolution that it is there. And you've spoken with historical society. I think there are a lot of grants, and there are some avenues maybe you could go down. And you're saying, Mr. Byrd, that you will not allow anyone on the land even to clean it or honor their dead?
If they honor my rules and regulations, which has not been carried out, we will talk about it and see what we can do. But as of right now, nobody's going to go back on there because it's too dangerous. There's open graves that sit in there. I can't, look, we kept that thing up to 1970, and we asked people to come in there and take over, help us keep it clean. Not one person has showed up since 1970 to go back there and do anything to that property. Nothing.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Before we leave today, if I can, can, can we get a clear understanding of what Mr. Byrd's requirements are? Because I am ready to meet them. If you can tell me what to do to clean, to have access to the cemetery, so that we can clean and provide access to it. I've got a team ready to get there and clean. So if you can tell me what that is?
When we asked for it, nobody would come.
I wasn't born in 1970, sir.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
But I'm here now, and I'm.
Mr. Byrd?
Ma'am.
Are there rules that you would like to say, that you would allow them to come clean it?
The county has to have the right to come in there and clean the right of way back there to the back. Would have to, because I can't do it, because it's, it's over, I don't know, a mile back in there to where the cemetery is at.
And I'm not sure if I may, Madam President, Tim, do we have a right, even if we, even if we agreed or whatever, can, can we do that?
It depends on how.
That's on private property, and I'm not sure the cemetery qualifies as one of the.
It'd have to qualify under the statute that allows the county to clean it, ingress it.
Sorry?
I'm sorry?
It has to comply with the statutory requirements. We have to look at this and see what it, two things. First off, we're going to do a resolution. We don't have a description of the cemetery. Mr. Byrd mentioned 53 acres, but we're not here about 53 acres, we're here about 120 feet, 120 foot square. I don't even know where it is. I did go online and try to look at it. I couldn't see where a cemetery was located. There's a lot of trees, so I couldn't tell. I didn't see a cemetery, but, I mean, there is limited authority. You have abandoned cemeteries that the county could actually condemn it, but to be aware the county could take it over. County being in cemetery business has been a problem in the past.
That's right.
And.
Let, let me ask you something, Tim. I know there's an attorney general's opinion in it, and what, I read it, I need you to clarify that, but my understanding from the attorney general's opinion, the board can do it if the, if the cemetery is deeded to us, but we cannot expend any funds for it.
Correct.
So the county, it would depend on the private property owner to donate that to us, which I doubt that Byrd is going to do that, but, but unless it's donated to us, we don't have authority to expend funds to purchase that.
There's another statute that solves a problem here that allows you to go within 150 feet of the public roadway, but this is obviously a mile, so that ain't going to work.
Yeah.
And that only applies to non-property cemeteries, it just appears to be. That's not going to cover a mile. The only way, where the county could absolutely is to condemn it or have it donated to the county with the right of way to maintain it. I'm not sure the board wants to do that.
No, I don't think so.
There is a way to address the liability concerns on the property. There's a way to do that if, if Mr. Byrd's attorney wants to talk about it, we'd be glad to discuss it with him. So the people going on there are basically assuming the risk and not going to be holding him liable. There is a way to address that. People would be required to sign something to acknowledge they're not, that he's not liable for anything that occurs while they're on the property. But he's, somebody's got to clean the right of way and do all those things. The board spreading a resolution and putting on the minutes, we're going to have to have a property description, otherwise the clerk not going to be able to know where to file it. You don't want something that's going to buy any entire piece of property, because that would create problems for Mr. Byrd. I assume he's telling people when he tries to sell it that they have, they have a cemetery back there.
Yes, sir, it, it, that's not an issue. Like I said, we've, we've been there.
It's a long time.
I've been there on the property since 1968. Our family's owned the property since 1950, 1942.
I assume they haven't been in barrels there since 1968.
No, sir, it's not been in.
Ms. Clayton said 1966 was the.
1967 was the last verified burial. I got the death certificate actually on Saturday.
Okay, so we probably just need to table this, find out the description, see, then bring it back up if we.
Can I say something before you all close this off?
If you'd like to stand up, ma'am, and give your name and address, we'd be happy to hear.
My name is Sandra White, Gufford, Mississippi, 39501. Due to the 106th Preservation Act, due to federal government, that property is protected. All they have to do is write to Washington, and it can be resolved, because as of, I don't know how Mr. Byrd consumed the property, especially being a historical landmark. The local has authority, but due to the 106th Preservation Act, that property is protected. And due to the fact Mr. Byrd won't allow them to go on there and to clean that property, then he is liable, but not at their expense. That property is protected by the historical 106. So you all need to look at that, and thank you.
Mr. Byrd, are we going to move on?
As much time that I have spent in that property back there, cleaning it, even brought the archery department in, and we cut around it, and burnt that piece of property off, not the cemetery. Burnt the property off around it after the storms and stuff, and we had 21 riders out there, the 4H, the gun club that we had out there. It's a lot that's going on on that property. And we asked Calvary Baptist Church to come out there and help. They told us if we'd get it cleaned, they'd cut. They told us if we'd get it cleaned, they'd come out there, and if we got it fenced off. We put all that money into that thing, putting the fence up, putting the gate up, and all that kind of stuff. And nobody showed up to help, nobody. I, I don't know what else to say. My, my funds are, are, are short. There's no way in the world I can go back in there and re-clean all that.
Well, you have people now that want to help.
Mr. Byrd, you have no objections to the, to the request that we do either through a resolution or however legally to identify that there is a cemetery on your property?
Y'all want to come out and look at it? You're welcome to come and look at it.
What I'm saying is, I've been out there.
Yes, sir.
Yes, but I, I, I guess what I'm asking you, and her, and Ms. Clayton's request, do you have a problem with that?
Before that could be done, uh, Mr. Ladner, it would have to be cleaned up around where the cemetery is at. I mean, it's, 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 we've got trees that's down, we've got holes that's out there. I mean, it's not a pleasant sight to look at.
Well, if I understand what you're saying, Tim, would, would that have to be surveyed to?
No, just a general description about where it is because the clerk can't figure out where to put it on the record without that. There are, I looked at it on the tax map over the weekend, uh, just to see what. I, I thought it was a dispute about locating the cemetery. I didn't know if it existed, so, uh, and so, when I looked at it, you have probably six or eight parcels of property that are separate parcel numbers that I looked at. And so if you know which parcel number it is, then we could just absolutely do a resolution and just merely acknowledge that the cemetery is there, and the clerk would be able to, to put it on, at least the record on that parcel number to locate it. Just to make it.
Stand up and give your name, please, and address, then we really are going to move on. We spent too much time on this. Go ahead.
I'm Gargi Valley, yeah. I live in Long Beach, three nine five, six zero. Um, as far as the cleanup goes, I belong to Gulf Coast Search and Rescue. Our team is guiding you to go back in and get that cemetery cleaned up. So the volunteers are there.
Okay.
Just, I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, ma'am. Alright, we'll identify the property, we'll.
If you do a resolution recognizing the historical cemetery that's located there, it's not going to have any legal effect on the ownership of the property. That's something that should be resolved. There is a way to address it to allow, uh, people whose loved ones are buried back there to go access it without liability being on Mr. Byrd. There's a.
Right now, it has to have a liability because it's dangerous back there.
I understand. I mean, but you could do a whole harmless identification for anybody that went out there saying that you'll be held harmless and would be liable for their actions.
Assuming you're on this.
Only top state law, we talk too light, unfortunately.
Alright, thank you. We're going to be moving, we're going to move on. So we will, we will identify the location and then we'll do a resolution later. Thank you for your time and efforts for storing history. That's great. Okay, um, consent agenda items, three through eight have been placed in the consent agenda, same appearing to be routine, non-controversial matters, which all supervisors are likely to agree.
Motion.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. I'm sorry. One minute.
You need to vote on number two, the recognition of the resolution.
I thought we were going to wait until we identified the property.
That's where I go.
You better table it then, so we, but all you were was recognizing, you don't have to take action.
Yeah, we just recognize.
Board took no action.
No action.
Okay, thank you. Alright, number nine, acknowledging receipt of and approving petitions for decreases to the two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two personal property rolls as recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion.
Second, discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Ten, order acknowledging receipt of and approving petitions for decreases to the two thousand twenty-three real property rule as recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Eleven, order approving travel hotel and registration fees for Baez McLaughlin and Alex Barstow to attend the two thousand twenty-three IAAO course four hundred, eleven twenty-seven, twenty-three, two, through twelve, one twenty-three in Starkville at an estimated cost of two thousand five hundred ninety dollars within budget and payable from line item zero zero one, one oh three, four seven five.
Motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Twelve, order approving in-county travel reimbursement for the tax assessor's office as listed. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thirteen, order acknowledging receipt of the delinquent personal property taxes for two thousand twenty-two presented by the tax collector as on file with the clerk of the board. Motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Fourteen, order approving travel expenses until cost and registration fees for tax collector Sharon Barnett and assistant tax collector Crystal Mason to attend the two thousand twenty-three Make-A-Fall Conference in Starkville, November thirteenth through fifteenth of this year, payable from zero zero one, one oh four, four seven five, within budget.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Fifteen, order approving hotel fee for Justice Court Judges Brandon Ladner and Nick Patano to attend the Mississippi Justice Court Judges Fall two thousand twenty-three Conference, October fourth through sixth of this year in Oxford, payable from account number zero zero one, one six six, four seven six. Motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Sixteen, order approving the subdivision of application for Henderson Point Edition subdivision, block two, phase two, located in section thirty-four, township eight south, range thirteen west, supervisor's voting district three, first judicial district as recommended by Jaclyn Turner, P.E., Harrison County Engineer as follows. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Seventeen, order approving the final plat for Dogwood Hills subdivision, phase four, units three and four, located in section five, township six south, range ten west, supervisor's voting district five, first judicial district, as recommended by Jaclyn Turner, P.E., Harrison County Engineer. Motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Eighteen, order approving compensation for, for the November two thousand twenty-three general election, possible runoff election, November twenty-eighth of this year, and training as listed. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Just curious, how are we on the movement?
They moved, they got along.
Completed the move?
Oh, great.
Uh, next one question, and it may be, we may be not involved still after the selection, but did we talk about the Gulf Haven?
Yes, sir. We've got to do something about that, and we, we, after the election.
We're going to wait till after this?
Yeah, we got to wait till after the election because it'd be impossible to move prior to it. But, uh, yes, sir. Not got a deal.
Oh, so we already voted on that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Nineteen, order approving assistance from facilities and maintenance and/or the road department with the following and any other responsibilities needed for the general election, November seventh, two thousand twenty-three, and possible runoff election for November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Twenty, order authorizing the board president and the EMA director to execute the sub-recipient grant closeout form for the Mississippi Office of Homeland Security Grant. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Order authorizing and approving the advertisement of an RFP for managed services, P twenty-five Public Safety Radio System, as recommended and requested by the Harrison County Emergency Communications Commission at their September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. Motion.
Motion.
Second discussion, uh, just questioning that. Matt, this is the, what, are we kind of like leasing it or?
It's not a lease, sir, but it is a service that we would be, uh, having a contract for. And so, uh, this is the, uh, the recommendation of the Communications Commission to put out an RFP and see what, what is the potential for pursuing that course of.
Pursuing that particular act.
Yes, sir, not committing the county to anything.
But we're also going to talk to the state about what they would offer as well, right? I just don't want to overlook that.
Correct, yes, ma'am. We, we are, uh, in the, it's been almost a year now, and I apologize it's taken so long to get to this point. But, yes, we considered all options, purchasing the new system outright for the county, buying into the state system, we considered that. And then this third option, which is a, a service contract. Once we put out the RFP for the managed services, that information's public and we can now go to the state and say, well, if we go through the state option, what would it take to do that? And, and, but we have to make this public first.
I like that, okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Twenty-two, order authorizing and approving the payment of invoice FPI zero 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 two five five from Communications International in the amount of ninety-seven thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents as final payment. YPMPL, as Microwave System Maintenance Replacement Project, as recommended by Harrison County Emergency Communications Commission at their September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting, payable from oh nine, zero nine seven, two eight seven, nine two two. Motion.
Motion.
Second, uh, one other discussion I don't, Matt, you know, uh, and I, I could be mistaken, but I added up all the invoices, including this final one, and it's about ten thousand dollars short of the actual total contract price. Did I miss add?
I think that some of the work, um, that was done came in under cost. And so this will complete the project, and there will be no more funds for it.
Now, it's about ten thousand dollars less on the invoice than that.
That's it.
Total contract. Good. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Fire Services, order approving the proposal of four geotechnical borings at Tradition Fire Station fifteen, or recommendation of Mark Williams, architect with Williams and Associates and Board President to execute contract agreement between Burns, Cooley, Dennis, Inc. and Harrison County. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Twenty-four, order authorizing advertisement for RFP for ambulance services. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Twenty-five, order approving contract number two, zero two four, zero six, with Southern Mississippi Planning and Development District Area Agency on Aging and Harrison County Senior Resources Agency in the amount of four hundred and ninety-one thousand five hundred dollars for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three to twenty-four in order to provide adult daycare NSIP, senior center, and transportation services from October first of this year through September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four, and authorizing the board president to execute the saying. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Twenty-six, order approving in-state travel request for Janet Mayo, executive director, and Lydia Stewart, intake specialist, to attend the annual Mississippi Public Transit Association Training Conference, excuse me, Tuesday, November seventh of this year through Friday, November tenth in Meridian, Mississippi, at a cost of about one thousand fifteen dollars per person.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Alright, twenty-seven, order approving out-of-state travel as listed below. Motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Twenty-eight, order approving human resources out-processing plan for all employees upon termination of employment checklist attached.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Twenty-nine, order concurring with the Sheriff's Department on employment as listed and as on file with the payroll clerk and personnel, Human Resources Department. Motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thirty, order concurring with the district attorney on employment as listed and as on file with the payroll clerk and personnel, H.R. Department. Motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thirty-one, order concurring with the county administrator on employment as listed and as on file with the payroll clerk and personnel, H.R. Department. Motion.
Motion. Second.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thirty-two, order approving payment of claims listed below to be paid from the tort account. Motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Recognizing Sheriff Troy Peterson as he reports with another person that's currently housed in the Harrison County Jail.
Good morning. Uh, currently we have seven hundred and four, eighty-one misdemeanors, hundred and one females, nineteen federal inmates, and a hundred and ninety-one stated inmates. While they're both here, I want to just recognize Matt. He'll be our new sheriff coming in, and this is Craig N. Casey. He's going to be the chief deputy under Matt.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yes, happy to have you. How's everything with Cruzen so far? Troy, nothing exciting?
No. I can tell you.
Yeah.
I left my house at nine o'clock and got here at ten.
I forgot I was taking maybe as well.
Take the pass road.
Well, I started on pass road, but you know, since going down ninety, I thought, then I couldn't turn.
If you want to do anything this weekend, just stay off of.
Oh, yeah.
But I finally got.
Unless you, unless you take some time to get down there.
Yeah. And if I remembered that.
That's awesome. And we have record numbers at the fairgrounds of Cruzen who are using every single RV pad that we added, so that's.
And I'm asking you something. Somebody asked, it's probably too late for this year, but somebody asked me, can they reserve this year for next year's spot?
At the fairgrounds? If y'all are okay with taking early.
You should pull your out.
That's okay.
Okay, because they had asked the little girl out there, she told them no, so would you ever know it's okay? Because they're creatures of habit.
I don't see any problem with it.
They all, they do it here. Well, take your money. At hotels, they'll do it. But I think there was a hundred and four.
Hundred, that's right.
A hundred and four.
That's right.
Out there, it's a lot.
Okay, about RV next year.
Yeah, because they'll reserve it this year for next year.
Okay, great. All right.
That's what they want.
All right, thirty-four, order authorizing the replenishment of petty cash account in the name of Robert Drace with Narcotics in the amount of four thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars payable from zero two nine two fifteen six thirteen to bring the account balance to the approved amount of six thousand.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thirty-five, order authorizing the replenishment of the transport petty cash in the name of Teresa Mitten in the amount of eight thousand two hundred ninety-one dollars payable from zero zero one two five three four seven five. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Order adjudicating the signatures and approving the purchase of a license plate reader system from TCSware, Inc., in the amount of thirty-eight thousand two hundred forty-five dollars as approved by the Mississippi Information Technology Services Department from project number four seven seven five four, purchase agreement CP one two zero two four hundred one nine, contract number IT two OT two oh two four zero 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 four, payable from Stone Garden Grant Funds, account zero three zero two two one nine two zero. Motion.
Motion.
Second, discussion, can you read those numbers? I didn't do them.
Charged by the word.
You don't have to read the whole thing.
I don't? Now you tell me.
You've got a written agenda, and so you read enough of it, everybody knows what you're talking about. You don't have to read the whole thing.
I could.
Yeah, nobody told you that.
You ever see a gun port's agenda? Gun ports got like one line.
I know, I want to, I want to change to that.
Well, there's this bad, no, there's this, you can't tell what they're talking about. Here, the reason they do that is because in the future, when you search for something, it makes it easier to find it. I argued with Claudine about it a bunch, but, and she's right, it does allow you to search.
But you don't have to read it all out if we do.
You don't have to read all out because it's in the agenda. I mean, it's written there, public, published, so it's not like it's, I believe, all.
Read it again.
Do we vote on that?
I don't know.
Oh, just any discussion besides that? All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Is everyone go with thirty-seven? No, I'm just kidding.
There's more than that. Just say motion for thirty-seven.
All right, all right, really? So we don't have to read all these? Thirty-seven, order adjudicating and approving the memorandum of understanding between Pastor Christian and the Harrison County Sheriff's Office to provide law enforcement services for two years. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
I would say that does give information out of the way. People know, so that's good.
But when it gets real long, it's up to you early.
Okay. All right, thirty-eight, order accepting the resignation of Lester Denly from the Harrison County Sheriff's Office Civil Service Committee. Motion.
Motion.
Second, discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Order approving the appointment of Joe F. P. V. Junior to serve in the Harrison County Sheriff's Civil Service Commission for the unexpired term ending July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Forty, order authorizing Board President to execute lost stolen affidavit, removing the following assets, and authorizing inventory clerk to remove the same. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Forty-one, order authorizing the following rifles to be returned to the U.S. Army, authorizing inventory clerk to remove the same from the sheriff's inventory. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Forty-two, order authorizing Board President to execute closeout documents for occupant protection grant number OP two thousand twenty-three, OP twelve forty-one. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Forty-three, order authorizing interlocal agreement between the City of Long Beach and Harrison County for the Mississippi Office of Homeland Security Operation Stone Garden Grant Program fiscal year twenty-one, authorizing Board President to execute the same.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Forty-four, order adding John Sanders Youth Corps to the list of assistant receiving clerks and authorizing bonding of same. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Order approving travel hotel and registration fee for Kelly Henderson, Teresa Hydrick, and John Eustace with Code Office to attend the Building Officials Association two thousand twenty-three Winter Conference, November twenty-ninth through December first of this year in Natchez, estimated cost eight seventy-five each, payable from line item zero zero one one fifty-five four eighty-six, zero zero one one fifty-five four seventy-six. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Forty-six, order approving travel and hotel for Angela E. Braun, Office of the Public Defender, to attend a client's second staffing conference interview October sixteenth and seventeenth in Pearl, Mississippi, estimated cost four hundred dollars, payable from line item zero zero one one sixty-three four seventy-five. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Forty-seven, order approving letter to MDEQ requesting grants SWC five sixty-three to be extended until December of two thousand twenty-four, and authorizing Board President to sign. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Forty-eight, order approving mileage reimbursement for the following employees.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Forty-nine, order authorizing transfer from the General Fund, zero zero one nine hundred nine fifty, in the amount of four hundred ninety-five thousand to the jail repairs, two thousand eight fund three eleven zero 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 three eight seven, to reduce the inter-fund loan as budgeted. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Fifty, order authorizing reimbursement to the Road Fund, one fifty zero 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 three sixty, in the amount of four hundred and three dollars and eighty-four cents payable from the General Fund, zero zero one one eighty five eighty-one, for moving the election commission office. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Order authorizing the reimbursement to the Road Fund, one fifty zero 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 three sixty, in the amount of two thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and seventy cents payable from the fifteen million dollar two thousand twenty-three bond fund, numbers three oh two two fifty nine oh two, for site work performed for the new Traditions Fire Station fifteen. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Fifty-two, order authorizing the reimbursement to the Road Fund, one fifty zero 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 three sixty, in the amount of thirteen hundred seventy-two dollars and forty-four cents payable from the Fire Services Fund, one oh six two fifty nine oh four, for concrete apron work done at the Socher Fire Station number eight. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Fifty-three, order authorizing the reimbursement to the Road Fund, one fifty zero 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 three sixty, in the amount of seven hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-one cents payable from the General Fund, zero zero one five twenty five eighty-one, for repairs to the parking lot at the Wool Market Tennis Courts. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Fifty-four, order approving payment of the following claims.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Fifty-five, order approving claims.
Matter of persons.
We don't have. Oh, thank you. Fifty-five is being removed from the agenda because it was already closed out. Thank you, John. Forgot about that.
I do have one.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Suggestion. May need a third meeting because you have over four weeks between meetings. I think it's blocked it off.
We had an extra one two weeks ago, didn't that bring us to the?
Well, this is a new fiscal year.
As a matter of fact, it's first meeting, I believe, and we said.
For number six, the, your next meeting, in the first position.
So we need another one before number six.
Just think about it, I mean, you make that decision, you know. If you want to have it here, just recess here, you can determine that in the blocks.
Okay. Thank you. We'll decide that next week. Fifty-six, order accepting McHenry Road Bridge replacement, project number SAP twenty-four sixty-one is complete, releasing Beacon Construction LLC, and authorizing Board President to execute a joint letter of formal contract acceptance and order as recommended by Doug Rackley. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Fifty-seven, order approving the City of DeArbyville's use of county equipment needed to assist in hosting its annual Veterans Day Parade, November eleventh, pursuant to the terms of the interlocal cooperation agreement between the city and the county. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Fifty-eight, approving the waiver of rental fees for the use of the West Harrison Civic Center by the Humane Society of South Mississippi, hosting a free pet vaccine and microchip clinic October tenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Fifty-nine, order approving the waiver of rental fees for the use of the Harrison County Fairgrounds and Equestrian Center by the Mississippi Junior High School Rodeo Association, April twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth of next year. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Order approving the agreement for housing of juveniles at the Harrison County Youth Detention Center between Harrison and Hancock Counties commencing October seventh, two thousand twenty-three, shall terminate December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight, authorizing the President to execute. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Order approving the agreement for housing of juveniles at the Harrison County Youth Detention Center between Harrison and Stone Counties, starting October seventh of this year, shall terminate December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight, and authorizing President to execute. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Sixty-two, order adjudicating the tax sale of August twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two, on tax parcel number one 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 zero J zero two zero two one point zero 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 for two thousand twenty-one tax erroneous and thus void ab initio and for related purposes. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion.
Parties' property have been sold to the City of Lexington with an exemption, therefore the notice was effective, should be set aside.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Order adjudicating the sales tax, the tax sales of August twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two, and August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, on tax parcel number zero four zero eight A zero one dash zero zero six point oh oh four, for two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two taxes erroneous and thus void ab initio, ab initio and for related purposes. Motion.
Motion.
Same thing?
No, this was a property that was in incorrect name by map and error, therefore the parties did not get notice and should be set aside.
Thank you. All right. Motion second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Order adjudicating the tax sale of August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, a tax parcel number zero four one three E zero two zero one four point zero 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 for two thousand twenty-two tax erroneous and thus void ab initio and for related purposes. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion.
Actually, this is a second, I hit the wrong name, therefore the notice was effective, which is a map and error, should be set aside.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Order adjudicating the tax sales of August twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two, and August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, a tax parcel number one four zero nine K zero one zero five four point oh oh oh, zero zero zero, rather, for two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two taxes as erroneous and thus void ab initio and for related purposes. Motion.
This probably was in the name of a church, and should have been exempt, therefore the period should be set aside.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Order authorizing advertisement of RFP for professional scientific services for the Mississippi Sound Coalition Project, I see Mr. Blasey, is that? Are you here for that?
To answer any questions that you have in here.
Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Second discussion, Gerald, I haven't said anything, but now, I, these, I think the next three or four, we're getting into the substance and paperwork to file defense of the sound. Gerald might want to address, for example, the economic impact of scientific services, how that can possibly be used, and of course, the educational one, too, I think, we're doing that.
Right, we'll, we'll be preparing these RFPs, with Pam, Karen, and then Judy. The, as you recall, we can now have the Southern Water Agreement through DMA, PMR, from the Go Mesa Funds that the legislature appropriated, we just got the contract a few days ago, you did. So, the, this first one, number sixty-six, is to go out for scientific study for showing the tipping points of how to manage the monitary spillway by using organza and other things, but we want to show through science that it will work, how it will work, and how to manage it. So it's really preparing to present to the Corps under the Lower Mississippi Confiscate Management Study that our congressional delegation has now compelled them to do. This is part of the biggest piece on here, it's probably going to be, you know, a very significant piece. We hope that the Mississippi State and Southern group that did the study earlier this year about the mid-Britain diversion will be able to, but of course, we'll have to see. But we know that they're capable of doing that. The second one, sixty-seven, you cannot impact analysis, as you know, the consequences of Alti Bloom in two thousand nineteen really damaged your taxes, collections, all the cities, the tourism and hotel association, and the Oysterman were devastated, of course, and Pastor Christian, you know, that been wiped out. So we want to quantify what they, again, another peer-reviewed study, that we can show the Corps and the Congress and the legislature, the consequences of their, this mismanagement of the river, and, and the resulting impact on local governments as well as local businesses, so that that's another motive for them to change how they manage. And then this, this third one is, as you know, we, we've kind of been on a shoestring up until now, except, thank goodness, for the county and Biloxi and DeArbyville, and wait, and Pastor Stan, so this is to try to get a public relations firm to do a website and maintains the social media, so we can notify people. We're building a database, we do have, you know, a few hundred people now, but we'd like to have an easy way to communicate. For instance, the Corps is going to have hearings on this Lower Mississippi study that the Congress has given them twenty-five million to do, we expect to have hearings here. We met with Senator Wicker in June, and, and again, fairly recently, Martha and I have been talking with him, he is probably going to have a congressional hearing on this whole shebang here, hopefully, early part of next year, and of course, we want to really make sure everybody locally knows about that, so they can come and participate. So that's the three. Next week, we'll have another one in Biloxi, Senator Ed Martha is saying it, and that will be for engineering services for the water gauge at the Rigley's Pass. Unbelievably, there's no gauge there to see how much water and the quantity and quality actually coming into the sound, because that's the state line, and up until now, until we started really getting active in this thing, the, the measurements of, that have been measuring, you know, where the water's going into Louisiana line, so we're southern and state and our scientists, you know, have a lot of data, there's other data out there, but this will help us prove what we know, we saw with our own eyes, happened in two thousand nineteen, so, that's kind of a capsule. We'll be back, you know, with the festival proposals and go through those through a scoring committee and everything, and it'll probably be November before we're back here on that.
Thank you, Gerald. Thank you, Gerald. I just want to make one recommendation on sixty-eight. When you're talking about professional public relations, that's so imperative. Reach out to PRAM, Public Relations Association of Mississippi. PRAM? Just because they can advise you, and this is such a public service interest for the whole state. I think PRAM might, you know, get some interns involved perhaps and kind of help y'all. I'll text you.
Yeah, Boeravoss, Mary Spank can help you with that.
Yeah. She was president.
Mary. So, if I contact Mary, she'll know how to do it.
Yeah, she was president.
Thanks for that. That'd be very helpful. We'd love to have all the help.
Yeah, we need the whole state really behind it, not just the, 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 the president. Yeah. Thank you, Gerald. Do I have to read everyone, or can I just say what Gerald sixty-eight through sixty, sixty-six or sixty-eight?
All of my RFPs for various public relations services, economic, professional, scientific. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'll make that mention.
Thank you. All those in favor, anyone? Second.
That's all items sixty-six, sixty-seven, and sixty-eight.
For the saver sound.
I would have a motion in second. Point of sixty-six.
We need a motion in second for sixty-six, sixty-seven, and sixty-eight.
Beverly made the motion. Can't make the second. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Gerald. Sixty-nine. Order approving up to two thousand dollars payable from two thousand, excuse me, from zero zero two, one hundred six nine five to be used for the community Halloween bash, October thirty-first, at Isaiah Friedrich's Community Center. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Seventy. Order adjudicating and authorizing expenditures as listed as necessary to advertise, bring in a favorable notice, possibilities, resources of Harrison County, including all forms of advertising, including but not limited to broadcast, logo recognition, publicity collateral, other media, all broadcast printed material and signage along with our online link. Motion?
Motion.
Second? I mean, do we have the same? Discussion? I just want to make sure that all these are open to the public. Those Mississippi ballroom dancers, that it's not a club that, you know, pays fees and people go. Like, I want to make sure these are all open to the public. If you could just check on those things, Valerie, before we put them on any agenda. Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
No.
Motion carries.
I want to make a, the sentence up there.
Oh, yeah. That one is. Mr. Holloman?
I've got one issue upstairs courthouse. I'm sorry. Tile upstairs courthouse. Contractor did a test on the glue that holds the tile down that. Glue has some type of asbestos in it.
Oh, Lord.
The glue is, the tile is not going to be taken up, as I understand it. So, as long as it doesn't become friable, it's not an issue anyway. But he says there are portions where they might have to sand, and he concerned that that would cause a problem. He's not qualified to do it. So, I think the board needs to get an environmental engineer. I call Covenant and Associates. They don't really do it. If you know somebody that might be able to do it, needs to authorize Pam to hire somebody to tell us, give guidance as to what to do or not do, just as a precaution. I assume the problem was the same when they did the tile downstairs, but I never heard anything about it.
They just laid it over. No, they had the concrete stuff.
I think the reason is because that has, already has three layers. It's been three layers.
But he told me he was not taking the tile up. His concern was that areas they may have to sand, therefore they might disturb the glue. And they're not sure how to do that without somebody giving them advice. I don't think he's really being cautious also, but.
Yeah.
Because I know, I can tell you, I didn't know anything about it.
Yeah. Yeah, that one.
These have to wash stuff. It's actually water to keep that from spreading.
Well, you're going to get the remediation, you're going to have to close down the whole courthouse for a while. So, I don't think that's necessarily just need, somebody needs to advise what needs to be done or not done to avoid a problem. Certain persons don't want to do it, have a bigger problem.
Should I make that motion to authorize Pam to hire?
And it's all covered. That's the only person I knew that might do it. I actually texted him, and he said he might have somebody that's retired that was, that used to do it that may come back and consult.
Okay.
Call Todd Hairston, Pam, and see what he says.
Yeah.
Second motion.
All right. You have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Anything else, Tim?
No, it's, unless I have any questions about any opinion with the case, everything that's going on right now.
Good. John?
No, ma'am.
I have one. I'd like to make an appointment for the South Pacific Pan Development District. I'd like to appoint Mr. Stanley Daniels replacing Mr. John Johnson.
I'll say.
Who is?
Yes.
Who's leaving? Mr. Johnson?
Yeah. Mr. Newt, I'm sorry, Ken, I didn't. Stanley.